Tuesday, August the 18th, 2015. Would you all please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Grab a roll call, please.
Smith?
Here.
And Gary Richardson?
Present.
Shadle?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Morell?
Here.
Buckler?
Here.
Burnett?
Present.
Now, I will take a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Commissioner Murad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pop. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Murad?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Now, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the July the 28th, 2015 minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shadle. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Morell?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Any communications?
We've got many communications. You've got the DDA meeting minutes, the latest planning commission roster. I realize it's been awhile, so you might want to update things. An article regarding housing diversity that was forwarded to me from our DPW director from the MML. An article from Councilmember Baker on bicycle safety and designing infrastructure to be safe for bicycles. And the report on the Robina Urban Design Project. And then you have a complete streets rendering for Woodward. You'll recall that when you were asked to choose between option A and option B, you went with C. Not unanimously, but that's what the majority of you council kind of felt the same way. They sort of had the same lukewarm feeling. In light of that, we had a conference call with all of the various staff planners from the various communities affected, all chatting about bicycles and sidewalks and service drives and maintenance. And there were some intense words on occasion, but in the end, we did find that there was an agreement that we thought that having a wider sidewalk was better than not. And that having the bicycles away from the traffic was a good thing as well. There was some discussion on whether it was better to have the bicycles at the same grade as the car, which is why if you look at the rendering, you can't really tell whether that's a curb or a stripe or what. There was discussion about whether it was better to have it be essentially curb separated, but at street grade. There were maintenance issues with that, which we all had discussed and we all talked about at the conference call. But then there was also discussion about if you kept it at sidewalk grade, were there going to be pedestrian bicycle collisions? There were discussions about having two-way bicycle traffic rather than one way and what we thought, how we thought people would behave, motorists, whether they would know to look both ways, whether bicyclists would actually cross the street to go north or south, or whether they'd just go on their merry way. But in the end, at this point, it was agreed that the bicycles can be between the car and the sidewalk, and perhaps the sidewalk ends up just being wider. That's what... Or we end up with it at a curb and we end up with a bunch of leaves and garbage in it.
Okay.
But at this point, it's all...
Still talk, talk.
It's all still talk. There's no money for it.
Okay. All right, at this point, I'll entertain citizens' comments. Any citizen who would like to address the planning commission on any topic not on our agenda this evening may step up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and you can have the floor. I will remind citizens, they will have an opportunity to participate in discussions as we move through the meeting this evening. Seeing no citizens rushing to the microphone, I guess we'll move right on into the order of business. Ms. Vanson?
Item number one is a public hearing, matter of conducting a public hearing regarding the adoption of the Residential Future Land Use Plan Amendment. Notice was published in the Daily Tribune. Notices were also sent to neighboring communities, underlying agencies, utilities in the county on August 4th, Oakland County. You have a copy of their report found that the proposed master plan amendment was not inconsistent with the surrounding community's plans. So that's a good thing.
That's what they essentially said.
Yes.
Well, we sort of thought that would be the way it would go.
Well, yes, because it's a good plan.
It's a very good plan. I think it is. We did a good... You did a great job on it in getting it together. So, I guess the first order of business is to conduct a public hearing on it. So I will open the public hearing. Do we want to talk a little bit about what's in it, or shall we just go for it?
Sure, we can do that.
Go ahead.
So the intent of the master plan amendment that's before the planning commission tonight for consideration was... Really came out of the 2007 master, the larger master plan that was adopted. And there was a thought at that point in time that the city of Berkeley didn't have any townhouse developments in the city. And there had been a lot of interest in having that, and so the planning commission, since this time, has been trying to find a spot to put them. Where would be a good location for townhouses? What should we zone to residential, attached, single-family? The problem with rezoning something is that if you allow... You would need to change the land uses that are there into non-conforming uses, and that causes problems with insurance and loans and all of that. And so there really was a thought, well, we want to allow for it, but we want to continue to allow the uses that are there. So the Greenfield District, which was adopted, zoning map changes were made and the district regulations were adopted some time ago, allows for townhouses. There is a zone on 12 Mile that is from, looking at the tiny map, and I don't have it memorized, from Greenfield to about Tyler. And it actually allows for townhouses on 12 Mile. And again, that development hasn't happened, but it is available if developers and the city... The city's willing to entertain the idea of townhouses or apartments being on 12 Mile at that location just west of the downtown. So again, we are still looking at wanting to have this important land use in the city, but we want it to be contextual. And so the planning commission is looking at, well, let's allow for infill development at certain locations, provided that it is contextual. And the city planning commission has been working on a form-based code which would allow for duplexes along with single-family, allow with... Along with townhouses, along with apartments in certain areas, provided that they fit into the context, have the appropriate parking setbacks, that they look a certain way. And again, this master plan amendment looks at the population trends. We peaked in 1960, family size is going down, and we're built out. We can't... We're not going to start annexing Royal Oak or Huntington Woods to gain population like they do out West where they just... The cities keep getting bigger and bigger. So this is a way to continue to make Berkeley walkable and to allow for people to... Their children to buy into the community after they've grown and be able to afford living here, as well as people that want to... They don't want to deal with the maintenance of a single-family home, but they want to continue to live in Berkeley. And that's really what this is looking at allowing for. And the master plan looks at these population trends and how it's important that we provide for housing diversity in the city. How was that?
That's very good.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. So with that, we'll entertain anyone who cares to address the planning commission regarding this.
Good evening. My name's John Delong. I live in Oxford, right behind Westbourne Market. And I think I read the master plan amendment, the correct document. Long time ago, when I was much younger, I remember living in apartments. And although I was always a good tenant, I remember that apartments with young folks could be very loud and have a lot of excitement. And what I'm concerned about is, in here, it says that apartments should be considered within a quarter mile of transit stops along Woodward Avenue. I'm just concerned about all of a sudden having an apartment near my property, an apartment for older folks, which I might want to move into some, I can understand. But, for example, we have a beautiful house down the street where the owner is going to be leaving soon, and it's a large lot, and it's a double lot next to it. Am I going to wake up someday to find out that that's been rezoned and it's being torn down? And townhouses are going to be built or an apartment? And how will that affect, you know, the community that I'm... I moved to because it is a bedroom residential community, and I like it that way. If I wanted to live in Royal Oak, I would have stayed in Royal Oak. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing no other comments, I guess I'll close the public hearing. So I guess we move on to item two.
We do, sorry. Item number two is Resolution R. 115, matter of adopting the Residential Future Land Use Amendment.
What is the desire of the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martin Smith.
Are we recommending this to...
No, you adopt.
We adopt.
The planning commission has the...
Okay, I move that we adopt Resolution R. 115.
You're making a motion.
I am making a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
To the resolution.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Buckler. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I guess I'll take a roll call vote.
Shadle?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three.
Item number three is discussion regarding street art pursuant to multimodal transportation plans recommendation. So this is a fun one, and you can indulge me in this, or you can say, forget it. I kind of went through in my report, my history of this, of liking everyday objects painted whimsically, and whether it's a dumpster, or whether it's fire hydrants in Ann Arbor. And again, as I said, I had talked about the fire hydrants, and our DPW director, former director Bruce Jerome was just, get out of here, kid. He was just tired, he just... So as soon as he retired, Eric Schuler, I, hey, what do you think about? And he gave me the caveats about how they paint them so that they know what the size of the pipe or the fire... You know, there's certain things about saving lives they need to know about, and they're color-coded that way, and I get that. That's important. So, then we moved on to utility boxes. And Bruce Jerome thought that was just swell if we painted those. At the time, AT&amp;T did not have an issue with it. I've since written to AT&amp;T, haven't heard back. I've looked into it a little bit, gave you lots of copies of this sort of thing. I don't know if you like just the plain beige ones, and you think this looks trashy, or you think it looks neat. I've kind of looked at it to the point where I need somebody to bless it, or somebody to say, yeah, that's a good thing, go for it, or no, that's not what we want.
Okay, planning commission, I'll let you go at it. I'll go first, Mr. Murad.
I remember as a child, when the United States was going through the bicentennial, it was a big movement to paint all the fire hydrants. I remember that as a kid, how exciting... I lived in a house where it was... One was right out in front of us, and they came by and painted it, and that was kind of cool. So, I think it's a good idea, you know? I like the idea. Maybe turn it into like an art project at the high school or something, and so...
Okay.
Kind of involve the community in some way.
Chair? Mr. Richardson?
Ms. Vanson, who is contemplated to be the judge of quality of these arts?
Oh, I haven't gotten that far. I haven't really even thought about that. I kind of... You know, I get that there could be an issue with it. I think if you all as sort of representative think, yeah, this could be an interesting thing, I'll continue on to hire folks and it won't just be me researching it. But certainly, we would want to make sure it wasn't...
In Mount Clemens, where I worked for many years, they painted the fire hydrants, a variety of designs on the fire hydrant, similar to the pictures that you provided us. And that was the city manager's idea. I cautioned that the city manager of Mount Clemens was fired a couple months after...
So the fire hydrants?
After the fire hydrants were painted. There was some controversy connected with that. I'm not saying that would happen here in Berkeley, but...
Certainly want to get community buy-in if you're going to do anything. That's why I'm talking to you.
I thought that the fire hydrants were... They kind of grew on you. I mean, they didn't look like traditional fire hydrants at first. You kind of look at it and say, well, that's a little strange, but they grow on you. Kind of seem like little friends, little cartoon characters after a while. So I'd say, go ahead.
Other comments?
Comment? Mr. Chair? I appreciate your boldness and awareness and ability to bring this to the community as an option. I think that it is something that would enhance the community, whether it be on fire hydrants or the utility boxes or whatnot. I mean, fully in support of the utility boxes, as there's numerous throughout our community that could be enhanced.
I saw yours.
And I think that would be a great enhancement to the community.
Okay.
Other comments? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Murad?
I think it's a great idea. I do think that... I think it's a good opportunity. That being said, I think you need to be... I think there needs to be some careful thought into possible ways that these requirements could be unfortunately applied. And when I say that, I can't say...
You are good at that, yes.
I can't say that I can think of... You know, for example, you do say in here, artists are asked to paint the utility boxes. And paint is a verb, and it's also a noun, but the act of painting could involve more things than paint. And if the intent is to paint the boxes with paint, you probably need to say that. And again, if somebody wants to paint one with...
You're concerned about feathers or something like that?
Well, I'm concerned about an unfortunate outcome that follows all of the rules and yet nobody likes.
Okay.
And so that's really my only concern. The other thing to think about is, what happens if they get vandalized? Do you just paint in beige again and then bring in the next artist?
Sure.
Or do you bring the old artist back to fix it? I mean, having something in place regarding this, I think, is pretty important, because it is the kind of thing that can come back to haunt you if somebody really, really likes a particular box and the way it was, and then it gets damaged or vandalized or replaced, because it's, we need a new box. And then all of a sudden, it becomes this big deal.
Right.
And then the other thing would be, and now that I'm expecting there's going to be... I think you're going to have some interest in this, but, you know, is there a sunset on these designs? Are these designs going to last? Are you going to let... You know, is this... Are we going to keep it up for five years and then paint it over definitely?
Yeah, I think. I thought I'd... I know certain ones had a sunset, and certainly it said that if... I think I didn't include it with it, that artwork may be removed or destroyed at any time without notification of the artist to accommodate utility box replacement. So we do say that if it has to go, it has to go, and...
Well, and then, see, but... And, you know, maybe you just eliminate the utility box replacement part, and that lets you off the hook. Because if you can take it apart... I mean, I think the city, because it's city property, and ultimately, the city is granting this commission, that the city has a right to, you know... There's this big thing going on about murals on the sides of buildings and how before they're painted over, removed, or obscured, the artist has to be notified 90 days in advance, which I'm presuming is to allow him to whip up public outrage and maybe change an outcome. But... So what defines that public mural nature of this?
Okay.
And if... And you know what? Maybe you do. You notify the guy, and he gets 90 days, and then it gets replaced, but unless it's an emergency.
Right.
But I think you need to cover those bases, because it is... It's one of those things that I could see people like, you know, I really liked the box that was here, and you went and did this. You know what I mean? It's just... I hate to say it, but as a guy who spends a lot of time reading codes and trying to figure out what they really mean, that's all I have.
Okay. Other comments?
Also in your guidelines, I think you have to consider obscenity and things like that, so...
And I will have the city attorney, I mean, he gets a packet, but obviously, he'd have to weigh in on all of those two.
Mr. Richardson? To me, these are certainly legitimate concerns, but they can be addressed by two steps. One, having the agreement with the artist to sign all rights to the city.
Right.
And two, making the final decision on whether the art's acceptable or not, remain with the city. Just have the artist submit a drawing ahead of time.
Right.
Yeah, that is part of the guidelines.
You know, I mean, that way, I think that would address these concerns adequately.
Other comments?
I like it. I've always been in favor of bringing some more art into the city. I think it's great. And I had the idea years back to do something on 12 Mile over the fence on the cemetery, but then I got sick and didn't follow through. So it's still a good idea to do this. And I'm young enough to remember the bicentennial, the bicentennial painting of the fire hydrants. I believe I managed to pull out some paint and do that once upon a time.
Other comments? Well...
Okay.
Well, I haven't had my favorite.
Well, you haven't. You were looking like you were saying, well, Ms. Vanson, I think you...
I am sitting on the fence on this one.
Okay.
And the reason I guess I'm sitting on the fence is, you talk about art, and what's art to one person is not art to another person. And then there's people who sit on the fence, and I don't know what it is, or why it's there, and I'm not sure. It's okay, I guess, but I guess I'm sitting on the fence on this one. I... The Woodward Avenue Action Association just recently took on the project down in Highland Park. They build a new pump house.
Yep.
And, you know, it just sat there. The pump house sat there in the background, and there was bushes and trees around it, and it sort of sat out in the open as a concrete structure. It didn't look that bad, but by gosh, now you drive by it, and I think it's the gladiest looking thing I've ever seen in creation. And some people think it's great art, and this is where I don't believe it's great art, but I'm one person. And that's the issue I have with this whole idea. I think the fire hydrants, I don't have as much problem with the fire hydrants, but when I start painting utility boxes and what have you in the community, they sort of sit there in a beige area, they're beige in color and what have you. And in some... There's a few locations in Berkeley where people have actually landscaped around the darned things, and it doesn't look too bad. So I'm just... I'm uneasy about this. I like the fire hydrant idea, I'm not so happy about utility boxes and how far you go with it. But I don't... I look at art, what I think is great art, somebody else will look at it, hmm. And especially when you get into contemporary art, a lot of people go, ooh, what is that? And how you make the... How you make the decision of what you're going to do and how you're going to do it, I guess, is still up in the air for me. I'm not against it yet, but I'm sort of on the fence with it. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Murad?
You bring up an interesting highlight of this. If I am a resident with a fire hydrant out in front of my house, I have to look at whatever the city approves.
That's right.
And, you know, it's funny, just two days ago, the city removed a street tree on our lot. No warning, nothing. My wife came home and said, Eric, you know that tree that was leaning out into the street? It's gone. And while I perfectly understand that that tree was leaning out into the street, and it was going to fall, and it probably should have been removed, the fact that... And it was on city property, the city can do what they want, you know, somebody made a decision, and now it's gone. And I didn't expect to have any say. Now, I might have liked a little notice for some, you know, just because, you know, gee, I mow the lawn around that tree, and yet somehow, it's not really mine. And when I think about how one day you could, you know, walk outside saying hello to your red fire hydrant, and then you come back and it's SpongeBob SquarePants, that... I think that, yeah, that potentially could be a problem, and I'm not sure how to resolve it. But I could see somebody being significantly not happy with the, you know, Vincent Van Gogh, A Starry Night on the side of his AT&amp;T box, if he doesn't happen to be a Vincent Van Gogh fan, now I am, and that would be okay with me. But I do think that there are some issues.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Buckler?
I appreciate the comments, but now you've just gone down a slippery slope, because what happens if your neighbor paints his house a color you don't like? What happens if they landscape in a way you don't like? Where does this end? We're talking about a fairly contained process that the city can, you know, maybe even make more narrow, that takes something that are rather hideous and obtrusive, I think, even with some landscaping, those boxes. I would be so angry if one ended up in front of my house, and I'd have no say, and AT&amp;T can plop it there. I'd much prefer it have some character to it then, at that point. Maybe you could have a simple yes or no for the person who lived in front of it, that they want it painted or not. And once they say yes, it goes through the process. If they say no, it stays standard. But I think you get a totally slippery slope if you are like, well, I don't like that one, but I might like this, because then you get into, well, should I be able to tell you how to paint your house?
Well...
Or the furniture on your front porch?
I can say that I have...
Library.
I have neighbors who have painted, and I don't necessarily like what they've done, but it's something they have the ability, it's their house, they can do what they want to with it.
Okay.
And if they're happy with it, fine, I'll live with it, but, yeah.
And I do think there is a difference between personal property rights and the public right-of-way.
Yep.
No question in my mind that if a person... There's not much I can do if a person wants to put 300 of those $3 solar lights all the way down their driveway and sidewalk, and, you know, the planes coming into measure are being confused. They can do that.
Yeah.
But I do think that there is a... We hold the city to a higher standard. I have some expectation from the city that they will play fair and square with the residents. And with very, you know... Again, in my case, I knew the tree had to go.
Yep.
But it was a total surprise that it was gone. And I think this could be a total surprise. And I'm not saying there isn't a way around it.
Well, and I will say this, just that we can keep talking about it, but when... Well, and I will say this, just that we can keep talking about it, but when I had spoken to the city manager years ago about the fire hydrant idea and she said, well, maybe in the business districts, but I don't know if we want to get into that in the residential district. So, I think there's, that there's already that line of-
And that may be-
-going around it and that it is different than a business property.
Mr. Muirad.
I think because it's open to anybody submitting a design, a homeowner could, you know, if you had that sitting right next to your house and, so you could submit a design that you wanted and take it on yourself. Sell the house and move away and somebody else comes along, they don't like it, they could submit another design to replace it, right? So, there's nothing to prevent it.
That's right.
You know, it's just like, you can now go and plant a new tree in that area if you so choose.
No, no, because it's a city tree, don't do that.
But you can, you can, you can ask the city to plant one.
The City Tree Program.
Right, through the City Tree Program.
I've put in eight trees on my, they won't let you plant over an old tree. That's the only downside.
Okay, yeah.
After a year, after a year, I believe they will.
Yeah, after a certain amount of time. We lost our oak tree, that was, wanted something back.
And there's also nothing to prevent from the house next door to be sold to a builder, tear it down and he's building one of these Bigfoots on it.
I agree. I think that, you know, we do, you know, that gets into the whole argument of, you know, do we owe anything to our neighbors?
Right.
As, you know, as residents of our homes, am I, is it total property rights? I can do whatever I want within the laws of the city and to heck with you, or do I, you know, I've, I argue, I argue that we do owe something to the city.
Right.
But again, I look at this as, as being, I think that if you, if you are going to limit it to the business districts and things, I think it's a great idea and I continue to support it. I just think that, again, when you have a residential, when you have a residential situation, and yeah, if the homeowner wanted to go out there and do it, you know, I might still have a problem with it because again, this is the public right of way we're talking about here. You know, if I didn't happen to like my, my trees in the public right of way, I can't just go out and cut them down.
No.
Because they're the city's trees and they remind me of that.
But, but I have seen people take the grass out and put ground cover or something like that so that they don't have to deal with cutting it or-
Oh, yeah.
-surrounded the trunk of a tree with flowers.
So, obviously there's a line that we have drawn somewhere.
Right, so.
And I'm just asking, we got to, we got to look closely at where that line goes.
And, you know, you said you like Van Gogh, other people might not like Van Gogh.
I agree.
So, you know, everybody has their-
I thought about doing one on my garage door.
Yeah, you could.
And then I thought my residents would kill me, my neighbors would kill me.
They'd get over it.
May I ask what, what great masterwork of art you were going to put on your garage door?
I had actually, years ago, for a high school art project, my brother projected a picture that he took of the Mackinac Bridge and he did it as a, as a black and white study. And, you know, I thought a giant, you know, I have, I have a hangar house, my, my whole front of my house is garage door, unfortunately. And I thought, you know, a giant picture of the Mackinac Bridge would be cool, but I just can't bring myself to inflict that upon my neighbors because they might not think it was cool.
They might want the Golden Gate.
Well, it would be that cream and green color that we have up there.
Yeah, I think it's a great, it's beautiful blue.
You could do like a trompe l'oeil effect and have, is that how you say that?
Wouldn't that be cool?
And have like the whole cafe thing in there or something like that.
Well, you know, you see the people who, who do the flag, you know, because-
Yeah.
Because-
No, I think it should look like a wily casket where you can just keep driving right into it. The ambulance.
Like an Escher.
Escher, there you go.
For years, there was a family in St. John's Woods, their name was Goodman, and they had a giant letter G on their garage door. And you always knew where their house was, there was no question, it's, well, there's their house. But like I say, I just can't bring my, you know, fortunately, they all like the little free library.
Yeah, so.
All right, have we given you some food for thought?
Yes, thank you. Yes, you have, and I will take it to city attorney and city manager and we'll see what they say. Thank you.
So, I guess I'll move on to citizens' comments. Any citizens care to address the Planning Commission?
Sorry to be a pest tonight. I didn't know this topic was going to come up and as I'm listening to you, I'm thinking, I live right next door to Westbourne, there's huge utility cabinets right next to my house and they have it landscaped where I don't even notice it anymore, but I would like to have some say in whether or not the trees were cut down and something was painted on there. And the, so I can see limiting it to business areas makes a lot of sense. Anything adjacent to a residential area, I'd be very leery about because taste is so different from one person to the other. And then the other thing is obscenity. I think Botticelli's Venus arising out of the ocean, the sea, is a wonderful painting and if you put that on the thing, I'd probably like it. But I bet you a lot of people in town wouldn't. And I don't know who in town is going to decide, you know, condemn Botticelli to being an obscenity, you know, versus, I don't know, maybe we have a fondness for Rubens Women. I don't know who's art qualified, who's aesthetically qualified in this city. I think we have some reasonably good, sound taste in the city, but I don't know if we're art critics. And I certainly don't know if we want to play the role of art censor. So, just my two cents.
Thank you.
All right, sorry.
Thank you. Any other citizens care to address the Planning Commission tonight? All right, then I'll move on to liaison reports. DDA?
Oh, that's me.
Yeah.
Okay, the DDA meeting was August 12th and it was the shortest one on record. It was called Twitter at 8:04 and adjourned at 8:25. And in between, Steve Baker thanked everyone who had volunteered to support the Cruz Fest and he complimented you, Amy, on, on your work for, with the Robina Project. And Chamber, there's a pub crawl Thursday and there's several restaurants participating. And the next Chambers chat will be held August 28th at Flagstar Bank. The Carrot Pass was accepted by council and there will be, the members get one free year subscription and hopefully this will work to get more of our residents walking. I have noticed that there's more people walking on Coolidge recently. And then the Robina 12 Mile Project, they talked about doing yet another traffic study and this would be about $10,000. And it was suggested that the DDA and the city partner to cover that cost. And this is going to show the impact of closing or not closing Robina for the businesses there. And as a business owner on Coolidge, I would be upset if they were closing a street that was needed to get to my shop. I can understand temporarily closing it, I think, but permanently, I don't know, I have to think about it some more. Anyway, there's one more candidate that, there's another, one vacancy on the board and there's two people that Jane is talking to. And I think that's just about it.
Chamber?
It was quick.
I did attend the Chamber meeting of the evening of August 12th. They actually did not have enough members to have a quorum, but they still discussed some events and such, so August 20th is the, the pub crawl. There'll be nine establishments participating, the most they've ever had. So, they've extended the time till midnight, usually it runs till 11:00 PM. So, it starts at 5:30 at Amici's, it's $25 if you pre-purchase, $30 at the door. And because of the size of it the last couple of years, this year they're going to, for some of the locations which are kind of tight on space, they're going to be splitting the group up into two different groups and like moving them back and forth, like, for example, 24 Seconds and Patrick J's, they'll split the group up to those two locations, so, and then, you know, after half of the time at those two locations, they'll ask everybody to switch locations. So, see how that goes. They're also gearing up for the golf outing, I think it's the 18th of September. State of the City is scheduled for October 16th and they have a group that is interested in creating an Irish festival here in Berkeley for the first weekend of, or the first Saturday in October. Don't know if they'll make it this year, but they definitely want to do it next year. And then they did that Cash Bash program as part of the Art Bash. They distributed about 3,000 of the coupons and as of Wednesday, 120 of them had been redeemed, so. Next meeting will be September 9th.
Environmental?
Nothing to report. Environmental did not meet last month.
All right. See, I guess I've hit everybody. City Council met last night. Interestingly, the library's been getting quite a bit of money donated to them and several donations from Spalding Curtain Funeral Home, it's to the library. And then there was the matter of accepting donations from businesses and organizations and there was a whole bunch of them that have donated to the reading program at the library and the library is doing extremely well. In addition to that, the city council approved a, a resolution to allow the Detroit Public Library to be, and Berkeley Public Library so they can have joint, you can take books out and materials out of either library and, and have a joint thing there, which is interesting. In fact, there's a whole slew of library, of communities, I have a whole page of them here, communities that participate with the Berkeley library system and you can go all over the place and-
That's good.
-get materials. I even see Wayne State University's libraries on here. So, that's interesting. And then they've approved the spray patch road repair that they've been doing. You'd seen in the fall and with the stone and they're going to continue that project on and what have you. And then there were several appointments to various committees and for community, for going to various organizations. So, that was the city of Berkeley's council meeting in a nutshell last night. So, with that, I guess we'll run around the room here and see if anybody's got anything else to say tonight. I'll serve over here tonight, Ms. Buckler. Ms. Shado. Mr. Morell.
Free for free.
Mr. Muirad.
I'm good.
Ms. Buck.
All set.
Mr. Richardson.
Nothing to add.
Well, I come down to Mr. Martin Smith.
Nah, I won't say anything tonight. Pardon? I'm good.
You're good.
I'm good.
Oh, I thought maybe you had something to say. Ms. Vanson?
Other than to say thank you for switching your schedules around, it really is appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, we did switch the schedule around because Ms. Vanson's going to go on vacation for her, so we made an exception here tonight. So, with that, I guess I'll-
Mr. Chairman, the motion is made.
Your second. Supported by Commissioner Muirad. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.